To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so the first item of business is item number three, resignation from the Bike and Ped Committee, Stephen Collins. His resignation date was 2/10 and his term was till November 2026. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank him for his service on the Bike and Ped Committee. Item number four we have here with us is to hear a FEMA CRS progress report on action items outlined in the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And can I have a motion to approve? This is not a voting item. Okay, this is just a presentation, this is not a voting item. All right, Emmeline, you're up. Jim's like, no, no, really.
Hi, thank you so much for Selectwoman and members of the Board of Selectmen. Every year, per our participation with the Community Rating System program, which provides flood insurance premium savings to our policyholders within the community, we are required to review the Flood Plane Management Plan, which is a line item of actions that we take as a community to ensure that we continue to look at ways in which we can make our community more resilient and hopefully reduce potential flooding issues for residents and businesses. So we do have a couple of changes since last year, one of which is we're still in progress on the Riverside Drive tiegate system, which has completed design and is awaiting for funding. We're hoping to, we are applying for grant awards for that and hoping that that will offset some of the costs for that particular project. ARPA funds have also been targeted to increase Fairfield's resiliency for some beach protection and offshore wave reduction studies. So that's been added to the project list and also includes looking at downtown green infrastructure projects and water detention projects in the Rooster River corridor. Those projects are in various stages of design and permitting. Fairfield is also collaborating with the Connecticut Institute of Resiliency and Adaptation to study reducing the flooding that occurs underneath our railroad underpasses. There's actually a public meeting that is scheduled for that next week, February 23rd. That's going to be a virtual meeting, and I believe information went out in the First Selectwoman's newsletter this past Friday on that. The town has also installed tide gauge markings in the Marina and Beach area with 24-hour remote monitoring in order to better emergency management preparation. And the Flood Erosion Control Board and TPC staff and engineering staff is working with a Climate Corps intern from Yukon who is studying the flood compliant structures within our community and those that are not, so that we can have a better understanding as to where those are located and how we move forward with additional resiliency programs. So that's all I have unless anybody has any questions. And Jim, and Jim Went, our planning director, and Bill Hurley, our engineering manager, are also here to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Emmeline. I appreciate you doing that. I know it's, that you have to do that as part of the deal, but I think it's helpful for the board to hear it and for our community to hear it, that we are working on these items and they are important to the town. I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions. Tom or Nancy, do you have any questions for Emmeline?
Not at this point, I think I'm good.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Emmeline.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks for your question.
Thank you. I like items like that. Okay, very good. Okay, our next item, can I get a motion to hear and consider an act upon the amendments to the following cell tower leases? New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, 100 Reef Road cell tower lease, and then Dish Wireless LLC, 3965 Congress Street. Can I get a motion to approve? Sorry? Okay.
So moved.
Put the button on.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna allow, we have town attorney and also Jared Schmidt, our CFO, on this item. Do you want to start, Jared?
Yep, I will, I'll start it off. So we have two separate agreements here that are before you. As you know, when I, you might remember, when I first came in, we brought in a consultant to negotiate these deals for us. You know, we were getting some requests to put new equipment on our, on the town-owned antennas, cell towers, and, you know, offering us whatever, $250 a month or something like that. You know, I'm not well-versed enough in the cell tower market to know whether or not those were good deals, so we brought in a company called Ben Strength Partners to negotiate on our behalf. So we have two that are ready to go right now. One of these is at 100 Reef Road, which is AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T already has a spot on the tower, they're looking to add more equipment to it. And so for that, we have structured a deal with them. And what it amounts to is from 2023 to, through to 2046, it was essentially starting at about $20,000 a month more, a year, sorry, $20,000 a year more in rent payments from them. And what that amounts to, because there is an escalator in there at 3% per year. And so at the end of the term, at the end in 2046, the additional rents would be $1,098,000. Again, there are, you know, they're adding equipment, this is not new, this is the Fifth Amendment to their, to AT&amp;T's lease, and there are five-year renewals in here. Any questions on this one?
So these are, sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there. Can I ask my question?
Go right ahead, Tom.
Yeah, thanks. So this group that you hired from the outside, they made sure that these leases are market rate?
That's right. They actually have a huge database of all different cell towers throughout the country, and so they can run their data. You know, they look at things like, you know, what the traffic is by each of the towers and how high it is and how much is already on there, you know, among many other factors that I don't even know about, so that, you know, to be sure that we're getting the best deal possible.
What about, can our residents expect better cell service because of this?
So in this case, this is AT&amp;T, they're adding equipment. I can't, I wouldn't be able to speak to that, you know, that's more of a technical thing. I would, my guess would be yes, they're adding additional equipment, but I can't say that for sure.
Okay, but it's, yeah, I didn't know whether they were upgrading, Jared, because you had said that they already have stuff there, so.
Right.
New equipment or upgraded equipment, I just assumed that would mean maybe a benefit to the citizens as opposed to just a financial decision by us, you know what I mean?
Right, no, and that's my assumption as well.
Okay. And I know you said town attorney Baldwin's on, Mr. Baldwin, is there anything we should know about these leases, or is this pretty standard with what we've done in the past?
Well, I can't speak to the past so much as the leases that are in front of you, and they're appropriate, and I will give credit to BSP for their work on negotiating those contracts. They are most definitely experts in this field, and the net sum of it is that they are appropriate.
Okay, fair enough. I, thank you.
I would also just remind the board that that agreement with BSP was approved by this board.
Yes.
A year or so ago.
I do recall.
All right, I can talk about the next one. The next one is at Congress Street at the fire station where we also have a tower. This was actually one where Sprint, well, because Sprint and T-Mobile combined, we had both Sprint and T-Mobile antenna, equipment on that tower. They were taking the Sprint equipment, they were going to take the Sprint equipment off. Instead, this was, this is being taken over by Dish Network. And so we created a new, a new agreement with Dish Network, and the Sprint one is no longer. There was, one of the things that BSP did for us on this, when Sprint was decommissioning their equipment or leaving, is that they went through and did a full audit of the, of the past payments and, you know, discovered about, I think it was about $35,000 that we hadn't got from, gotten from Sprint over the period of their previous lease. And so that was great, that was great to recoup that. But for this one, this is a 15-year lease, actually ends up being, because of when it's starting, it's about 12 years. And it's fixed, there is not a renewal which, you know, works to our benefit, because the one that we had with Sprint allowed them to, the deal that we had with Sprint was that they were allowed to leave at any time that they wanted to. And so this will lock in, this will lock in Dish Network to the, to the tower for that period of time. And the additional rents over the period of time from 2023 to 2025, 2035, is $344,000 additional, additional lease payments.
And this is, is this the Dish Network, the television?
I believe so.
Okay, and again, we don't know whether they'd have better service to our citizens based on this.
So this one, because it's taking over the existing equipment, I'm not, I'm not aware of any additional equipment being added, they're just basically taking over the equipment left behind by Sprint.
Got it. Mr. Baldwin, any concerns with this lease other than, I mean, 15 years is a long time, but is there anything else we should know about this lease?
Not from my perspective.
Okay. And you're comfortable with the lease for all other terms?
I am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
You're welcome.
Nothing further from me.
Nancy, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. If there's no further questions on this item.
Do you want to call the phone, please?
Sorry, if there's no further questions on this item from the board, if there's anyone from the public would like to comment on this item. Hearing none? Back to the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, bless you. Okay, item passes unanimously, thank you. Item number six, can I get a motion to consider and act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $15,277.73?
So moved. Oh, sorry, Nancy.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none? Is there any discussion from the public on this item? Hearing none, back to the board. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, motion carries. Our only, our other item is just to re-vote on our change to our schedule of our budget meetings. So can I get a motion to hear and consider an act upon the following amended date for the Board of Selectmen public budget hearings for calendar year 2023 at 10:00 a.m. via WebEx and in person in the first-floor conference room at Independence Hall, 725 Old Post Road. February 22nd on a Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. would be the first public hearing. And on February 24th, Friday, beginning at 11:00 a.m. And then the final budget deliberations and vote, public executive session, February 27th on a Monday at 10:00 a.m. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead, Nancy.
I was just gonna say, 8:00 a.m., I was just confirming that we had talked about that, I'm sorry, I'm just looking one more time, because that, I know 11:00 was Friday.
Yeah, 11, no, it's 10:00 a.m.
On Friday, it's 11:00.
Sure, it's on Friday, so Wednesday on the 22nd, it's what it was before 10:00 a.m.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And Friday is, oh, it does, well, not on mine, I'm sorry, does it say it on yours?
No, no, I thought that's what you said out loud, sorry.
Okay, no, no, no.
What you said out loud.
No, I apologize, 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. And then Monday at 10:00 a.m.
No further questions?
Okay.
So there's no way we can do Friday at 10:00 a.m.?
I, yeah, I'm sorry, I cannot.
Yeah, Nancy needs to.
Oh, okay. All right.
Just so that's which, I have a work thing that I cannot switch, so.
I understand, Nancy, not an issue. I'm good.
Okay.
Did we put this before us?
Yeah, I.
Not so moved? Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll second it if not.
Thank you, very good. Is there, is there any discussion from the public on this item? Back to the board. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, motion carries. And then we, to hear and consider an act upon any business that shall become before the meeting, I just have two items that I wanted to bring up to the board, if that's okay. I had, as we know, Penn Field has been an issue of top discussion, and I had a conference call again with FEMA on Friday and was able to confirm a town hall meeting, which I will be subsequently sending out a newsletter to the community with the information for February 23rd on the, on the issue of the notices of violation regarding Penn Field. And then my second item is I wanted to just give an update to the board regarding the fire union negotiations. I realize a lot of our residents and elected officials have reached out to me regarding the status of the contract negotiations with the firefighter union, and I have, I thought it would be helpful for me to take a few minutes to share where we are in the process and now that it's actually allowable and appropriate. As way of background, the collective bargaining agreement between the town and fire union expired on June 30th, 2021. The town and the union engaged in negotiations for several months, starting before then, in March of 2021. Several other unions had expired contracts that were delayed due to COVID but were amicably and negotiated and settled. Notably, the town settled with the police union in May of 2022. Given that both unions represent departments with critical public safety roles, we were hopeful for a similar outcome would result with the fire union. The town could not agree to some of the fire union's proposals based primarily on the high cost to taxpayers, and ultimately, the town and union were unable to reach an agreement on a new contract. The next step in the process is usually mediation, where a third-party mediator is brought in to assist the parties in getting to an agreement. The town offered mediation to the union several times, but they declined to participate. The union instead filed for arbitration. For those who may not know, in arbitration, a panel of appointed arbitrators listen to both sides during a multi-hearing process and then decide on which proposals will become part of the new contract. There is no opportunity for the arbitrators to compromise in this process, as there could be in a mediation. The arbitrators are forced to side with either the town or the union in each individual item for each year of the contract. The arbitration process began in August of 2022 and has been completed with the last-best offers from both the town and the union submitted by January 30th, which was the deadline. Now, attorneys for both the union and the town are preparing briefs that are due at the end of this month. Arbitrators have until April to make their final decision. The original union proposal included 28 new positions, which estimate, which was estimated to cost the town a minimum of $30 million over a four-year term of the contract. The fire union also proposed significant yearly wage increases, which were double and even triple some of the other settled contracts, including the police union contract. Every year, the town reviews staffing needs with our department heads, including the police and fire chiefs, to ensure staffing levels are meeting the needs of our community. Additionally, in the event of a large-scale incident, Fairfield has a longstanding mutual aid agreement with first responders from neighboring towns that provide immediate assistance. I am sincerely grateful for the service of all our firefighters and their efforts to protect our community every single day. It is truly unfortunate that some of the union leadership launched a bit of a misleading social media campaign, one which has had residents believing that they were not fairly compensated or were unsafe. Last year, the gross compensation of 71 of our firefighters was over $120,000 and up to $198,000. Despite the social media posts may have stated, while we were in arbitration, the town did engage in off-the-record discussions with the union in an attempt to resolve the collective bargaining agreement outside of arbitration, which is allowed. For the public to know, I think it's important that, and we can and are allowed to say, that the last-best offers were as follows. The union proposed adding 12 new firefighters, wage increases of 4% in 2021, 5% in '22, 4% in '23, 4% in '24, with a total cost to taxpayers of $10 million, 10.6 million over the life of the contract. The town proposed four new firefighters, wage increases at exactly what the police settled for, at 2%, 2.75, 2.75, and 2.75, with an additional step increase in the wage schedules for a total cost of $6 million. The difference in the proposals is about 4.6 million. I believe the town offered a fair proposal to address the concerns the union outlined in this contract throughout the process, and I join our Fairfield firefighters in wanting a resolution for a fair contract, fair for the department, fair for our residents that we both serve. And so I just wanted to share that because I know it's been, you know, it's been a sort of a hot-button issue, and there's been a lot of consternation, and I've had a lot of residents and elected officials asking me to speak or write something about this. But it was advised to me that it really wouldn't be appropriate for, for me to be speaking about this as we were in off-the-record negotiations and during arbitration. But now that the last-best offers are both submitted, I felt it was important for me to communicate what has been kind of going on with, with this to the board. And obviously, it's not really up for discussion at this point because it is in arbitration, and the, both attorneys for both sides are putting together their briefs that will be submitted to support the offers that each side made. And ultimately, it will be up to the arbitrators to decide on which, which pieces they will approve and which they will not. Sher, go ahead, Nancy.
I certainly, thank you for that. I certainly appreciate the update. As you mentioned, it's been such a hot-button issue, talked about pretty widely and discussed and commented on through social media. Did, did anybody from the union or the public, I mean, obviously, it's under new business, but was anyone made aware that you were going to be giving this update today and, and again, fully understanding that it's an active negotiation, so probably a lot can't be discussed? It just feels, because it is such a big issue, and there were so, there were multiple sides represented, it feels, in some ways, like this update is just not necessarily fueling it, but adding to the, to the, the inability for people to comment, so just, I think more is just going to be taken rather than understood. I don't know if I'm being articulate in what I'm saying, it's just, it's like, it's a discussion that it can't be a discussion.
So, well, it's not really a discussion, right? So I believe most of what's been shared on social media wasn't a discussion either, was mostly in accusations or whatever you want to call it. And as I said, I think, when I first came into office three years ago, that I really felt like our community was just engaging in a lot of negative social media, and I thought it was not helpful for our community. But aside from that, I'm the chief elected official of the town, I'm updating the Board of Selectmen when it is now appropriate to do so on the details of the background and also the details of the last-best offers. It's not really a discussion, it's just informational for the board, and I thought it was important that you both be updated in a public, in a public way, now that both of those offers have been submitted. Sher, Tom, go right ahead.
So first of all, thank you for the update. And you're right, it's been a hot-button issue.
I can't, I can't really hear you, Tom, too well.
My apologies.
Sure.
Number one, I want to, I want to thank you for updating the board. As Nancy indicated, it's been a hot-button issue, mostly on social media. It's also been, and regardless of which side you're, you're on or what you view is, is appropriate, it's also been kind of one-sided on social media, because the town did stay quiet on, on the particulars, and, you know, I certainly have asked about that several times and was told that that was appropriate during the, during the negotiations and the arbitration. So I thank you now for bringing out the facts on what both sides are asking for, what the economic impact is. And let's see what the arbitrator comes back to. I think that's, that's the appropriate course of action, and hopefully, some of the rhetoric will calm down. Now, I did have one question for you, if I might. There's, there's also been a lot on social media regarding the length of time that they've been working without a contract, and I might be wrong on this, but my understanding is that's not exactly unique either in this period of time or going back a number of years with the contract discussions that we've had in town. Am I wrong on that, or is that right, if we could just address that one point?
So, no, no one is operating without a contract. My understanding when I.
Under the old contract.
Right, so my understanding, when I came into this position, you know, obviously, it's my first time working with, as a municipal official, aside from, you know, a business owner. Contracts are, you stay with your current contract until the new contract is.
Right.
Approved. But then, when the new contract is approved, the, whatever it is, retroactive benefits.
Yeah.
Are paid to anyone based on what was approved.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, Brett, the real question was, has this been an extended period of time, or is this kind of par for the course as to what we've seen both with other municipalities as well as previously? Because just, I ask the question because when I was on the Board of Finance, I seem to recall we've gone through this before, not just with the fire department, but with other unions when, when we've had negotiations, that it's, it's not unrea, it's not rare for the unions to be operating under their existing contracts until such time as they can get a new one that all sides are, are in agreement on. Is that fair?
Yeah, and my understanding is, well, obviously, a lot of these contracts were all delayed due to COVID. So COVID caused some real issues for us because we couldn't obviously negotiate, and there was, you know, it was a state of emergency. So most, I would say, all, almost all of our contracts are settled. Police, they came early and wanted to settle. The nurses were settled. Thea just settled. Thea just settled, which is our admins in town. The ECC, and I believe, I know DPW is pretty close. I know they're working. They've been actively working on that. But, for example, I have a friend who's a firefighter in Stanford, and I think they're over three years now without one, and he said they're just going into mediation now. So I know it's not unusual. But I, you know, again, I just, I wanted to just share this with the board, because there has been a lot of, you know, controversy, and it's unfortunate, because obviously, we all highly respect all of the people who work for our town, most especially our first responders. And I didn't want anyone to think, because I wasn't responding to it, that I don't respect our first responders, because I 100% do. But as a chief elected official, I, I follow what I'm told by attorneys, and I want to always be professional, and, and I was bargaining in good faith all along. And so I, you know, it was, you know, it's hard to watch sort of stuff happening on social media, but again, you know, you just can't, you can't, I, you know, can't engage in that. It's not appropriate.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I guess I want to follow up my comment, just because I think I can be more articulate now that I'm listening to the conversation unfold here. I definitely appreciate being updated. I think an item of this import and the nature of what's being discussed, I just think an update could have been better served if it had been publicly noticed on the agenda, just so people could listen in. But I, I appreciate the update, so that's just, wanted to share that concern.
I appreciate that, Nancy. I just think there's been a lot of angst surrounding this, and I don't think we need to add to it. I'm just simply updating, there is no further discussion. It's not a vote of the Board of Selectmen. It's not a, it's not an open discussion. It's just an update about where, where we are in the process, and now that it is appropriate for me to do that, I felt that the board had a right to know what's going on. Ultimately, RTM votes on contracts. I believe they are scheduled to vote on the Thea contract, I think, this month, because it's settled. But that's the way our charter works, so I just did that as a courtesy for the board. All right. Does, do either one of you have any new business that you wanted to share? Share, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, no, Brenda, I wanted to bring up the fact that Ken Dolling passed away, and we had just renamed the gazebo after him. It's probably appropriate that we have a moment of silence and thank him and his family for sharing him with the town and for all he did through the course of many, many, many years of town service in a variety of capacities.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's why I wanted to move the Board of Selectmen meeting, because as you both probably know, I was pretty close to Mr. Dolling. He was like my adopted grandfather, our adopted father, pick what you will. So I am really glad we were able to do that. He was really excited about it when I told him, and I think it's a source of pride for his family that, that the sign is there now at the gazebo. And I appreciate you both supporting that important endeavor. So if we could, at Tom's request, if we could have a moment of silence for Ken. Thank you.
And Brenda, if I might say, I think Len is all the father than anybody could handle, so, you know, I'd go with the grandfather thing.
Well, that's true. That's true. Ken was a bit sweeter, maybe? That Len? Yeah, he was, he was, Ken was a hell of a good guy, that's for sure.
Sorry for your loss, and it sounds like the loss of a lot of people, so.
Thank you. He was, he was a good Fairfielder, that's for sure. All right. All right. Does anybody else have any, anything else? All right. Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session pending litigation with, regarding the Wenzel William J. versus Town of Fairfield with Town Attorney James Baldwin and Attorney James Williams.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Thank you. Can.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I just want to indicate there were no votes taken in executive session, and I would like to ask for a motion to approve the settlement on recommendations of counsel.
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Is there any discussion? Well, there wouldn't be, from the public, but I will ask. Back to the board. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I hope you feel better, Nancy.
Yeah, feel better, Nancy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care.